Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 9, 2024. If you could please join us and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the rule.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower. Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Ray Rower.
Thank you. Feel like you gotta retrain me tonight. It's been, what, three weeks? All right, um, next thing on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion by, was that Carlson down there? Second by Geisler to adopt the agenda. Any correct discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. We're looking at the minutes from the June 18 meeting. Mayor. One of you guys. Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18, 2024 meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Grisgoviac, second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have nine items on our consent agenda this evening. Okay. First item is item two on this evening's agenda, and that's to approve the final payments, Group Two, for Project 21-65, Fire Station Number Three. A summary of the contractors and the final payments amount for Project 2156, Fire Station Number Three, are outlined on the attached spreadsheet. Net change orders totaled $8,529.18 for adjustments to the scope of work. All of the dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file. No liquidated damages are recommended. Staff recommends approval of the change orders and final payments to the contractors listed on the attached spreadsheet, so this is a motion to approve those. Next item on our agenda is item number three. It's a second on the consent agenda. Approve final payments to Batuminus Roadways Incorporated for Project 23-1, Street Reconstruction. A summary of the Project 23-1 is in front of us, and it's the amount due is for $37,591.56, and the changes to the contract were for quantity adjustments from the original bad, from the original bid. So we're looking to approve the final payment to Batuminus Roadways Incorporated in the amount of $37,591.56 for Project 23-1. Next item on our consent agenda, item number four tonight, is to approve the final payment to Asleksen's Services Incorporated for Project 23-4, Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction. The, let's see, this, up of this, bum, bum, bum. The change orders were for bank stabilization and trail realignment, realignment within Erlinson Park requested by city, city staff, which were not included in the original project scope. Additionally, staff requested an extension of an existing culvert pipe below a portion of the Coon Creek Regional Trail due to erosion concerns, which was also not included in the original project scope. Additional time was required to complete these change order tasks, which consequently moved the completion date to August 11th and passed the original contract completion date of June 30th. So we're looking to approve change orders and final payment to Asleksen's Services Incorporated in the amount of $1,829.45 for Project 23-4, Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction. The next item on our consent agenda is item five on this evening's agenda, to approve the final payment to Meyer Contracting Incorporated for Project 23-10, Northdale Boulevard Water Main Replacement. The change orders were for subgrade excavation, additional removal of Batuminus payment, full depth payment reclamation, and removal of the existing signal system at Sordaburg Elementary. Most of these change order costs will be covered by Anoka County as part of the cost sharing agreement outlined in the joint powers agreement for this project. So we're looking to approve the change orders and final payment to Meyer Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $21,026.37 for Project 23-10, Northdale Boulevard Water Main Replacement. The next item is item six, is to approve the final payment to Ferguson Water Works for Project 50, I'm sorry, Project 21-22, Water Meter Replacement Project. The changes to the contract were for quantity adjustments from the original bid, as well as some replacements completed by city staff. Project 21-22, we've been working on this a few years. So we're looking to approve the final payment to Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $15,928.39 for Project 21-22, Water Meter Replacement Project. We're up to item seven now on the consent agenda, and this is to adopt Resolution 24-74, Accepting Donations and Business Sponsorships. We've had donations from, from gift cards up to almost $3,000 for, for safety camp, for cops and cardinals, community outreach, city events, movies in the park, senior services, newsletter programs, transportation and programs. And so we'd like to, we would like to thank Young Wilson, Denise Larson, Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association, Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League, Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association, again, Quick Trip, Community Strength Foundation, Premier Health Chiropractic, Serve Pro of Coon Rapids and Central Anoka, Twin City Eye Consultants, Alina Health, Aetna, Charitable Minnesota, Magnify Financial, All Energy Solar, Chick-fil-A Coon Rapids, The Grotto, Alcoholics Anonymous, Lynette Van Voorst, Carolyn Eaton, John Dolan, several anonymous donations, and our own Super Seniors Club for their support and their donations, and all need to be accepted through the city councils, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-74 to accept the contributions made to the city through June 30, 2024. Item eight this evening is to adopt Resolution 24-71 to accept grant funds from the Metropolitan Council's Water Efficiency Grant Program. The grant of $36,000 requires a city match of $9,000, which has been included in the city budget. The smart irrigation program will offer discounted smart irrigation controllers for sale to residents, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-71 to accept grant funds from the Metropolitan Council's Water Efficiency Grant Program. Item nine, and that's to adopt Resolution 24-75, Establishing the City Manager's Salary in our closed meet, meeting summary. On June 18, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were the mayor, all council members, and city manager, and during the closed meeting, the city council discussed the city manager's job performance during the previous year, and we also discussed the terms of the city manager's employment agreement. Upon conclusion of the performance review and compensation discussion, the city council was agreeable to adjusting city manager Matt Stemwitt's base salary, and the attached resolution establishes the city manager's annual base salary at $214,000, retroactively effective to June 17, 2024, and the city council was further agreeable to adjusting the city manager's deferred compensation contribution to $4,000 annually effective this year, and all other components of Mr. Stemwitt's compensation and employment contract will remain unchanged. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-75, a resolution establishing the city manager's salary. And the next item, which is the item nine on our consent agenda, it's our final item, and it's actually item 10 on this evening's agenda, is to approve a cooperative agreement for public safety and security for the 2024 3M Open. The 2024 3M Open will be hosted in the city of Blaine from July 22 through July 28, 2024. The event and related social events require a significant security presence. As such, the city of Blaine Police Department has requested assistance from other law enforcement agencies. The attached cooperative agreement outlines the rights and responsibilities of each party, and this agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. The scheduling of Coon Rapids Police Officers for Security Services will only be done in a manner so as not to impact the safety and security of Coon Rapids. There will also be no impact on the city budget, as police expenses will be submitted for reimbursement once the event is over through funds provided by the 3M Open. So we're looking to enter into a cooperative agreement to provide public safety and security related to the 2024 3M Open and related events, and that is our consent agenda for this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion or corrections or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
First, I, you know, highlighting a couple of things on the list. The long list of donations and business sponsorships, I think, is indicative of the, just the community and how our businesses support the things that we do in our community, as well as individuals, and just want to add an extra thank you for that support and participation. And then the second thing is for our city manager to publicly say, he's, he does a really good job, and we're very luckily, lucky to have him here in our city, and that, you know, because of, of him, he helps make the city run, and his, he and his team, because it's, Matt will probably be the first one that will admit to it that it's not just him, that it's his entire management staff that works for the city, and so just wanted to, to bring that forward.
And that, that was the consensus from the closed session, so we're, we're very happy with your service here, and hopefully you're happy being here. Of course, you're waiting with bated breath to see if we approve this, right?
I did put it on the consent agenda, maybe that was all presumptuous.
All right, any other discussion? I did want to mention item eight, and that was to accept the grant funds from Metropolitan Council's Water Efficiency Grant Program. You are going to want to check the, this Coon Rapids City's website shortly, I would imagine. They will be offering a discount on the Rachio, I think that's the brand, smart irrigation controllers for those of you that have an in-ground irrigation system attached to our municipal water system. It's a particularly good buy on those, and they work right on your internet, and they know when to run and when not to run. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Couple of quick questions. The first one is the final payments to the several, several contractors for Fire Station Three. I just, I'm not familiar with all those contractors, and I know it's not a lot, but none of those contractors are, are concrete contractors, are they?
Mayor and council, they are not. No, it's like doors and hardware and some smaller contracts.
Okay, I was pretty sure of that, just wanted to ask. The last one that I had a question on is the final payment for Ferguson Water Works, 2122, that is an old project, so we've been working on that for the last three years. I just wanted to ask, are all the meters now, the entire city, replaced? Are we, is that done?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, we have about 22,000 out there. We've replaced 15,000, so that's not the entirety of the whole system, because we still had some warranty on some of the newer ones, and we, they were, those manufacturer dates were, were good for us, and we weren't having any problems, so we focused on the ones that were the worst of the worst, which is why the contract didn't come in as, as much as it was supposed to be, because we felt comfortable with some of them, and we also had so many of the other ones failing early on that we just replaced them. So by the time we got to doing them, they were already off the, the books, because we had already done them.
Okay, the only reason, okay, thank you for that, it's just because it's the final payment to Ferguson, so we're done with Ferguson, but we still have more meters to install, is what I'm hearing?
As part of our replacement program, we are currently done with this. We probably won't be talking about those again for another 12 to 15 years.
Hopefully not, right?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm good.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent agendas. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. Congratulations, Mr. Stemwitt.
Speak through.
And to us.
All right, item 11. Went backwards, there we go. And this one, this one requires a public hearing. This is for, hold a public hearing for the grant application for the U.S. Department of Justice and consider an MOU with Anoka County. Deputy Chief Jacobson, you have something to, something to tell us here, I think.
Mayor and council, for the last several years, as long as I can remember, we've been awarded funds through the JAG grant, through the Department of Justice. Each year we use it to buy equipment that we don't normally budget for. The funds are actually distributed by county, and then to the different agencies within the county that qualify for them. Currently, it's the city of Fridley and the city of Coon Rapids in Anoka County that do receive funding. Again, as in the past several eight years, Fridley declined their portion of the money, so we are taking all of the money from the, that was awarded to the county, and this does require an MOU with Anoka County, as well as the city of Fridley, and us to hold a public hearing. We are receiving $27,598 for equipment purchase that we didn't budget for. The responsibility of Coon Rapids is going to be $39.85 for that equipment. The equipment includes protective face shields for helmets, handheld night vision units, GPS tracking units for investigations, portable charging packs that can be used with, for investigations or normal patrol squad cars, remote cameras for criminal investigations, trail cameras for criminal investigations, pole cameras for criminal investigations, and a small toolkit to assist investigations, gaining access to various places they may need to during the course of their duties. So with that, the total of all that equipment is $27,637.85, so that put us just over the amount that we were awarded.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, if there are no questions, this requires a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to address counsel on the, on the United States Department of Justice JAG grant? Is anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing on the U.S. Department JAG grant? All right, seeing nobody, we're going to close the public hearing. Might be the last time I do that tonight. It's so, so should, all right, so I guess we're now looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
With no changes being proposed, I make a motion to approve entering into a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County and the grant from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong, and then maybe we'll get a show of hands on this one, or? Oh, no, I guess not.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Sorry. I'm not sorry. All right, we have one more public hearing, and that is to consider a public hearing and consider approval of non-domestic animal exhibition permit to Little Blues Traveling Zoo. That sounds like another one of the events up at Riverdale. Hannah Irene DeBille of Little Blues Traveling Zoo has submitted an application for non-domestic animal exhibition permit to be used on July 13, 2024, at the Touch a Truck event located at Riverdale Village, 12701 Riverdale Boulevard. The non-domestic animal exhibition permit would allow Little Blues Traveling Zoo to provide a petting zoo at this event. All the applicable, applicable application documents have been submitted, including site plans, proof of necessary liability insurance, and animal health records. City Code 6-601 requires that a public hearing be held by city council prior to the issuance of a non-domestic animal permit. Now, they don't say what kind of animals, but we gotta assume that it's a petting one. It's, it's going to be small, docile animals, right?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We have a list, and all will be fun and well and safe.
All right.
Come and enjoy the event.
Okay. Any questions to counsel before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. Is there anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing on the approval of a non-domestic animal exhibition permit? Okay. Anybody here for the public hearing on that one more time? We're going to close the public hearing and look for a motion. Councilmember Geisler.
I make a motion to approve the non-domestic animal exhibition permit to Little Blues Traveling Zoo at the Touch a Truck event located at Riverdale Village, 12701 Riverdale Boulevard on July 13, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
I just really want to hear you say applicable application document five times fast.
Right, yeah, I've never seen them put that one together before. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And they can bring on the Jumanji animals, I guess, now. Councilmember Geisler.
I just have a side question. The touch a truck component, is there a city component? Are we bringing any trucks for folks to touch?
Yeah, Mayor and council, I'm not sure if all the vehicles there are there, but typically we have police and fire vehicles that participate in those events, and I believe that's probably the case this year, although I'm not sure what the lineup is.
Okay, I just wanted to let folks know that there, you know, could be something else there, instead, in addition to petting the animals.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Getting the chance, but maybe just a word of thanks to the management at Riverdale Village. They're bringing a lot of nice events in there, families are out there. It's just a nice addition to our community, and this is just another domestic.
There's, there's a reason Riverdale Village is doing very well right now. It's, they're not hammered by the typical vacancy of a lot of the malls.
Right.
They, they run a very good ship, and they're, stay involved.
Good community partner.
Yeah.
Very good community partner, yep. All right, yes?
Mr. Mayor, we have a helicopter from Lifelink for Touch a Truck.
Oh, we, oh, we found the list. All right.
Ambulance from Alina Health, Coon Rapids Fire, Coon Rapids Police, a safety truck from Canexus Energy, and an electrical lift, lift truck from ESL, and a garbage truck from BP, and a snowplow from the city of Coon Rapids.
Well, very good. We are going to have a truck there.
And that, that traveling zoo, phenomenal.
And that's not what happened to your aunt?
No, sir. There are no animals, you know, taller than me. It's perfect.
All right, so since I dropped the ball on the discussion on that one, is there anything else on that one? All right, we voted, so we're on to item 13. Consider Resolution Number 24-54 Sub Nine, Awarding a Contract for the Soccer Complex Field Lighting Materials. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, the city has received bids for the lighting system on the current soccer fields. There are six fields over there. The request was for lighting materials only, so we will be replacing the fixtures on the existing poles, upgrading to LED lighting. We received three bids. They were all very competitive bids. Ephesus was the apparent low bidder, but they came in with a 10-year warranty, and, and the other two bidders were offering a 25-year warranty. So as then we look at Qualite and Musco, Qualite doesn't meet all the project specifications either, so that, we had a concern with that. And then further, Musco, we already use Musco in some of our parks, so the, the operational efficiencies with their control system, with their communications, and, and the existing poles and lights that are out there currently are Musco designed, so they are going to be just replacing fixtures on their own poles, which gives the other people problems in order to do that, which is why Qualite doesn't kind of meet those project specifications to allow that to occur. So with all of that said, staff is recommending that we award to Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of $569,000, and we have dollars in this year's budget to cover most of that, and we will be budgeting for the difference in 2025, and that was included in the project specifications as far as how payment will be received on the project. So again, this is materials only. We still have to get through some electrical work that goes with it, and some installation, which will be coming to you at a future date, but we need to get these in and get them ordered, so the long lead delivery time, we can get them installed between the end of this season and the beginning of next season. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Sure. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
First, a comment. I think it's great that we're getting a 25-year warranty on this project. I mean, this is a big, big part of Coon Rapids, this field. I was wondering, we're getting all new fixtures, LED fixtures. In this bid, does it take into consideration any rebates from, I'm not sure if we're in the Canexus or XL Energy area here, are those additional that the city has to apply for, or is that part of the bid?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, it's not included in the bid. It is a requirement that the installer that's in the next package will be required to submit, that we estimate probably about a $9,000. It, it's not significant, and that is if indeed there are dollars still left by the time we, we do that, but it is going to be done, it's just not embedded in this bid.
Okay, sounds good. I thought with the project this big, that might be a little bit bigger rebate, but I know they're kind of dialing those back now, so.
Plus, that makes sense, that they're not going to give you rebates to buy the bulbs. They're going to give you, they want you to put them in.
Makes sense.
All right, any other questions from Mr. Hammer? All right, somebody want to move us forward on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
Move we adopt Resolution 24-54 Sub Nine, Awarding Contract to Musco Lighting LLC for Soccer Complex Field Lighting Materials in the amount of $569,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and that was to Musco Sports Lighting LLC, $569,000. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2307, Resolutions and Contract Amendment Local Housing Trust Fund. Mr. Brown, I feel like we've pretty well beat this to death between a few workshops and a couple council meetings. Is there anything you think we need to know on this?
Not specifically. I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Brown on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
And first to Mr. Brody, can I do them as one motion, or do you need them separate?
I think you could do it as one motion.
Okay, thank you. So first, I will move to adopt Ordinance 2307, Establishing a Local Housing Trust Fund and amending city code by adding Chapter 2-1300, Local Housing Trust Fund.
Your honor, may I interrupt?
Yes.
Perhaps we should take the ordinance separate, and then the other three can go together. I apologize.
No worries.
All right, so we have, we have a motion on item one there. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will continue.
The other three are good?
The other three are good, thank you.
So I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-72, Allocating Funds to the Local Housing Trust Fund, and move to adopt Resolution 24-73, Amending the 2024 Budget for Home Improvement Programs, and move to adopt the 15th Amendment to the Service Contract with the Center for Energy and Environment for Administration of Housing Programs.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Just to reiterate your comments, that there was a lot put into this between staff and council, back and forth. There's a lot to it, and a lot of it makes sense. I had a lot of questions on it. I think other council members had questions on it as it went through, but in the end, we ironed it out, and we got everything settled, and this is a, this is a good way to move forward.
Yep.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I think I would add, the, the local housing trust fund, it's a new thing that was, that, from the state legislature, and so by adopting this and using it, it allows us to kind of put a different bucket for the housing funds that we've got. It's, some of it's just kind of paperwork and moving around, but it gives us more flexibility with that, but it does not change anything. We're still going to have the housing programs that we've had, the front door, the Homes for Generation, the loan programs, those kinds of things will still remain. It just kind of has a little different label in our budget.
It, it does give us a little bit more room in the bucket, because we're going to be picking up that sales tax.
It does.
Correct. In the future, allows us to do that, yeah. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 15. Item 15, Planning Case 24-8, consider site plan and dimensional and design flexibility, building addition 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, Brick Wall Services. Mr. Passner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So I'm ringing back the application for an addition to the IDC Automatic Building at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The applicant has provided some new renderings showing the updated design to the exterior of the building, and these renderings show what the building will tend to look like traveling west on Coon Rapids Boulevard, traveling east on Coon Rapids Boulevard, and then kinda looking the building dead-on from the center of Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I think you're gonna have to look in your pack. Well, they're not in our packet.
Point of information, we're not seeing what.
We don't have anything on the.
On the display, on our displays.
Absolutely, okay.
Yeah. I thought they're all in the packet here, too, right?
They.
Yeah, there they were.
Okay, there we go. There we go.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, and I was, I was planning on, on leading up to them by showing the existing buildings, but I don't have to do that. You've seen it. It's all, it's all there. So these are the, the three renderings. This is the first one showing it dead-on from the center of Coon Rapids Boulevard. So you can see some of the increased articulation of the building and the roof line, and the colors that they provided, the raked concrete and smooth concrete, and then the, the three different shades, or four different shades, sorry, from light to dark of the facade that they are proposing, as well as windows all along the second floor, and those sort of darker focal points in the middle of the building and on the four corners of the building. This is a view traveling east from Coon Rapids Boulevard, so you can see the east side of the building, which is a side of the building that's generally facing away from Coon Rapids Boulevard, but due to the angle of the building, it's one that you are able to see traveling east. So there is some, some of the truck movement operations on the site are proposed to happen on that side of the building, but they still continue to use the articulated colors and, and roof line changes on that side of the building. And then, again, from the west, you can see on the left the existing building and the proposal showing the added windows on the second story of the proposed addition. So I'm not gonna go over anything else. They are requesting the, the three flexibility requests, the two-dimensional flexibility and one-design flexibility requests. And staff do continue to have a recommendation of approval for the flexibility requests, as well as for the site plan. And then one point to note, I did add a proposed condition to this presentation that was not in the packet. And this is just to clarify that the building elevations that were provided are not the up-to-date version of the facade of the building, but the renderings are, and requiring the applicant to update the elevations to match the building renderings. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
And you'll leave that up there, so we can read that into the, or.
Yeah.
Is it large enough to read, Mr. Mayor?
It is there.
I'll do that.
Yeah. Councilmember Geisler?
One other question. So, so the, it would say to the building elevations, is the landscaping plan, are the trees that are shown in the elevations, are those in the actual site plan? I don't recall.
Those are. So, and I, and just show kind of a little bit. You have the trees along the boulevard. This side, you can kind of see where the trees end. That's the, basically the edge of the site. And then anything closer to the viewer from that is the, the in-town suite site. So that's just showing the landscaping that they have proposed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this, the landscaping and the renderings that we see now is consistent with what was in the site plan.
It is.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for going back and doing this and making the changes. It's much nicer, it's a much nicer looking building, and these are, it's nice to be able to go, oh, that's what it's gonna look like. It's nice, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor, I too would, I appreciate, you know, indulging us and giving us the different renderings. You know, I know it's, you know, when you're in a 3D CAD, it's not that hard to be able to show me the different perspectives, but being able to truly see it, and especially on the eastbound view, having the interesting corner there is, to me, a game changer and really sets it apart and makes it meet the, the desires of what we would want on the boulevard.
Great. Okay. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Passner or of the folks?
Want me to go?
Sure.
Okay, so I would make a motion in Planning Case 24-8 that, to approve the proposed site plan with the, can I do the 12 stated conditions?
That's how I would do it.
Yeah. Plus, an additional 13th condition where the building elevations are updated to match the building renderings provided on July 2nd, 2024, or displayed at the July 9th council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Geisler and a second by Gascoviac. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I just wanna thank IDC for expanding here. It's beautiful. Really appreciate the work that you do on the building. It's beautiful. And I just appreciate that you're expanding your business in Coon Rapids, and I thank you for that. I thank you for our history, and I thank you for expanding Coon Rapids.
Yep, all of that, absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do believe a second motion is required to approve the flexibility request as well.
All right, well, that'll be the easy one, I think, won't it?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take that one then, too, to make.
What are we on now? I'm sorry.
After point 12, there's another, a second motion.
Ah, okay, got it.
Ready?
Oh, yeah, there we go. It, it looked like a separate paragraph, you know. It looked like the paragraph where it always says, and then we're gonna pay for it like this, you know, so I didn't even realize. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Geisler?
I will make the second, an additional motion for Planning Case 24-8 to approve dimensional flexibility for the floor area ratio and for total non-residential floor area and design flexibility for exterior building materials, finding the modifications are necessary to respond to site conditions, result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and further the intent of the Port District.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now we're approved. Anything else?
Nothing else on this one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I noticed nobody was moving out there. I thought they must, they must be waiting for something. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. And you can, you're welcome to hang around the rest of them. We've only got a few items left. No.
You guys are entertaining.
Well, we got something to work with tonight, don't we? Item 16 is an introduction only. Planning Case 24-10, consider an introduction of an ordinance rezoning 9050 East River Road Northwest, Harsted Hills LLC. Mr. Passner?
Gugan, Mayor and Council. So this is a request from Harsted Hills for an 11-unit, single-family residential subdivision and a rezoning to, from LDR 1 to LDR 2. So tonight, we'll only be introducing the rezoning, requesting that the Mayor and Council introduce the rezoning. And then on the meeting on the 23rd, we have scheduled the decision on the rezoning and then the decision on the preliminary plat as well. So this is a parcel, a 4.47 acre parcel on East River Road, just east of Adams Elementary. And there are single-family residential subdivisions to the south and to the east that are zoned LDR 2. The subject property has a single-family home on it. It is mostly wooded. It's zoned LDR 1. The applicant is requesting to rezone from LDR 1 to LDR 2 to match the single-family subdivisions to the south and to the east. And will then be proposing an 11-unit, single-family subdivision on said parcel. The parcel to the north is, contains power transmission lines and is essentially a utility parcel, zoned office. So just showing you a quick map of the zoning and land use designations. The land use designation is low-density residential, which matches the surrounding land uses. The zoning is LDR 1, which matches the elementary school to the west, but is different from the LDR 2 zoning to the south and to the east. And then what the applicant is proposing, the change from LDR 1 to LDR 2, the two major changes that this would cause for, for future development would be reducing the required lot depth from 150 feet to 135 feet, reducing the required lot width and area as well. And the lot depth of the LDR 1 district was the main issue for the applicant in developing LDR 1, because it would have made it impossible to put a street through the center of the development, and the street would only be able to be on one side of the development. So the applicant is requesting that zoning change. With that, that's all I really have to, to go over today. It's really just a motion to introduce the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Mr. Hammer? I'm sorry, but this, our, our 610 East River Road project, doesn't, that's, does the current plan still bump up against Adams Elementary or not?
Mr. Mayor, the current plan does not bump up against Adams Elementary.
Okay, so that's, it's not gonna have any impact. Okay. Just that little sidebar, all right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Passner?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I know we're not voting on this tonight. It's coming in a couple of weeks, but, you know, the differences between LDR 1 and LDR 2 are just setbacks and, and sizing of the lots. That's still low-density residential. It makes sense to do this, to be able to have a nice new development come into our community. It's consistent with everything around, so I don't see any, that this will be any problem going forward.
Yeah, I mean, one of our, one of our jobs is orderly development, and this looks perfectly orderly to me. Lines are up with the one next to it. It's close to the school, you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions of Mr. Passner? Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, I just wanna add, I was actually quite happy to see this on the agenda. I think it's fantastic.
Yep. Okay, well, if we don't have any other questions, then let me go back to the, in the case of Planning Case 24-10, an ordinance rezoning 9050 East River Road Northwest from Harsted Hills, or to Harsted Hills LLC. We will consider that introduced, and we will take it up at the July 23rd meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sir. Oh, come on up.
I just wanna make a correction on, because I don't wanna go in the public record as LLC is Harsted Hills Inc.
Oh.
So we don't, we don't get caught where we have to come back. I am Martin Harsted. I am the developer. I have my sons here. And I, I'm just gonna say, we'll, we'll see you on the 23rd, but we're, we're, we're planning on, my son's a builder, and he, he would be, a family business, would build all of the lots, and we're, we're, yes, we're going to a little smaller lot, but we're going to walkout lots, because we're anticipating bigger homes in there, so.
Yeah.
I'll see you on the 23rd. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Not that should matter, but it, our introduction was for Harsted Inc. Harsted Hills Inc, yeah. Okay, we are up to item 17. Consider introduction of an ordinance to repeal an ordinance, 1424, and establish parking limits on portions of 111th Avenue and Creek Meadow Drive. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We're asking you to consider introduction of an ordinance to allow parking on portions of Creek Meadow Drive and 111th, as opposed to trying to do an ordinance that would have talked about dimensions from each direction. We thought it best to wipe the slate clean, and, and so we're not saying we'll allow parking on this whole stretch. There is a no-parking-zone map included. It really starts from the east side of the soccer complex entrance and goes to the townhome accesses to the east, closer to Robinson Drive. Our recommendation is north side of the road only, to eliminate additional parking across the road. We estimate it's about 1,300 feet. You could probably get about 60 to 65 vehicles in there. We bag those signs anywhere from three to eight times a year with our open houses, these events. It's just time for us to do, this one's been chewed on a few times about what's the right thing, what's the safe thing, 40 a mile an hour road, adding crosswalks. We wanted to start with this approach here of allowing some parking adjacent to the location where they're primarily being asked. This is an introduction of the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gascoviac?
I have a question. I'm not sure I'm fully prepared to ask, but I'm gonna try it anyway. If we, if we remove the no-parking restrictions along this piece of highway roadway, can we turn it into the MSA? Does it go, can we throw it into that bucket where we get dollars from the state?
Councilmember Gascoviac, you are qualified to ask that question, and it already is a state-aid road.
Oh, I didn't think we could do that with no-parking restrictions.
It's because of the width of the road. It already exceeds the standards to, to allow parking. And, and we could have considered parking on both sides because of the, the wideness and the speed of this road. We just didn't feel that that was the best solution for us. So it is a state-aid road already.
Already, great, state-aid road, and it's wide enough, so yeah, I'd get behind this, changing this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gascoviac? I'm sorry, Councilmember Geisler, I got that.
So maybe just a, a side ask to Mr. Hammer. When we go to approve the ordinance in a couple of weeks, if we could do just at least one slide on a presentation, so there's a visual for people to see where this is and where the parking is and is not going to be. I think it's in our packet, but that means people have to dive in and go to the packet and dig that out. But if, if we show it on the, on the council meeting, I think that would be helpful for the people who patronize the soccer complex.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's a descending pool. We're starting with the people that are watching the council meeting, and then we're going down to just the soccer ones.
They may tell two friends and, tell two friends.
All right. Any other questions on this? If there are not, then we will consider an ordinance repealing ordinance 1424 in its entirety and providing language to allow parking on segments of the north side of 111th Avenue and Creek Meadow Drive between Hanson Boulevard and Robinson Drive, introduced. And we'll take that back up on the 23rd, right? Okay? All right. Item 18 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses. Ms. Lenzmeyer, you wanna hit the highlights on this one?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, yes. Staff is requesting that council consider an ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses. As you know, back in 2023, the state legalized adult-use cannabis with the intent that licensing would begin in 2025. However, with this legislative session, changes were made that will allow early application as it relates to some cultivation types of things. And so that application process is open for specific applicants right now, and staff really isn't prepared to address needed changes to the zoning code. So we are requesting this moratorium to press pause and give time for a study on the issue and where we can make those changes in the zoning code. As part of this, we are required to hold a public hearing, so we'd also ask that you establish a public hearing for July 23rd at 7:00.
Okay. Is there any questions on this? Okay, then if there are no questions, we will consider an ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses, introduced, and then we need a motion to order the public hearing? Is that how we do that?
Why not?
Sure. Sure. Be very official.
Good answer, just to keep it moving. All right. Councilmember Carlson?
If you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to order the public hearing on July 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Gascoviac. Is there further questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 19 is to consider appointment of election judges and approve the salaries. You wanna go again?
Me again, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's that time of year in an election year where we ask council to establish the salaries for election judges and approve the election judge list, which was attached in your packet. We're recommending that the election judge salary remain at 12 per hour, assistant head judges at 13, head judges at 15, and student judges at 12 per hour. We're also requesting authority for the city clerk to make substitutions and appoint election judges as deemed necessary during the 25 days leading up to the election. Inevitably, there will be folks that for some unforeseen reason drop out, and we'll need to replace them, or we may need to move folks just for all number of different reasons, so we request approval and appointment of the judges on the list.
Very good. Ms. Lenzmeyer, I, I realize nobody does this to get rich, but are we competitive with other polling places around us?
Mr. Mayor, we're really close. The, the 15 for head judges is really good. 12 is a little low, but our folks are willing to do it at this rate, and I'm comfortable with it for now. Thank you. and I'm comfortable with it for now, thank you.
And it is, yeah, it's not gonna change anybody's life, that's for sure. Okay, seventy-one, any questions of Ms. Lenzmeyer first? Councilmember Geisler?
Is this for both the primary and the general, or will there be a second list for the general election?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, this is for the primary election, though most of these folks will repeat for the general. I will come to you again in twenty-five days ahead of the general election and ask you for appointment and approval at that point.
And then the other question, do you have enough judges?
We are sitting great right now, as I say that, you know, things happen. So if you're interested in serving, let us know, we've got an application online or you can call the clerk's office. The one thing I would like to get out there is, I would love to have some student judges, we just don't have very many right now, summer's tough. But if you're interested in serving as a student judge in November, please get ahold of us, it's a wonderful opportunity to learn the process. And one more thing, a big thank you to everybody on the list for stepping up and agreeing to work and serve in August.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I had a question for Ms. Lenzmeyer. I had a constituent ask me just the other day, if they can't make one of the two remaining elections this year, how do, do they just reach you and give you as much lead time as possible and, because we're appointing this slate, but if one person can't make it, is that what happens?
But, but this is only for the primary, we're gonna do it again for the general, does that?
Okay.
But what was the que?
Question is, we're appointing all, the list of these names, what if someone on that list can't make it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griscoviac, they just let me know, and then I have to take a look at party balance in the location and whether we can move forward with the number that I have left in the location or if I have to recruit. Inevitably, what we do is we have three or four folks who are willing to just on zero notice show up and serve as an alternate, so we would slate somebody in there, that's why I'm asking for that approval to make appointments as necessary between now and the election on August thirteenth. So we'd take care of that.
Okay.
Very good, all right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
If you could expand a little bit, what is a student judge?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Novak, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. Once you're eighteen, you're required to declare a party or indicate that you don't affiliate. So a student judge is sixteen and seventeen with the parent's permission and permission of the school to miss on November fifth. It's a great opportunity, I recommend it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, or somebody want to move this forward? Wasn't just an introduction, right?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I spent, I think, sixteen years as an election judge, it's a great activity. So I will move to approve appointment of the election judges as outlined on the attached list. I will move to authorize the city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the twenty-five days preceding the election if substitutions are necessary, and approve the hourly salary for election judges at twelve dollars per hour, assistant head judges at thirteen dollars per hour, head judges at fifteen dollars per hour, and student judges at twelve dollars per hour.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. And that brings us to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. All right, that was, that was fast. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, so we are up to other business. What do you have, Council, or Mr. Stemwell, or?
Mr. Mayor, do we want to start with future events or past events?
Why don't we start with future events?
Okay, so the future events, coming up on Thursday, it's another one of our summer concert series, the, the concerts in the park, it's the Red Letter Band. And also every Wednesday, you know, so tomorrow, at the Ice Arena is our farmer's market.
All right. What else do we have? Anything else coming up?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak first?
Just want to let everyone know that my very own class of eighty-nine is celebrating its thirty-fifth anniversary this year. And if you are a member of the class of eighty-nine, please join us at Short Stop Bar and Grill at seven o'clock this coming Saturday.
All right, very good. Okay, Councilmember Carlson?
It's Summer in the City, next, next Tuesday, right, next week.
Yeah, Woodview Park, right?
Wood, yeah, Woodview Park, which is one five four oh Olive Street, but it's behind the Presbyterian Church of the Master. So if you're on North Dell Boulevard, it's behind the Presbyterian Church of the Master. That park is just, it's kind of a hidden gem, you wouldn't even know it was there if you're on North Dell Boulevard, but it's a beautiful, beautiful park, so it'd be, it's a great location.
Everybody will be in the shade. I don't, I don't think the sun hits that grass in there, man, there's so many trees. All right.
I suppose we could also announce about, so on eighty-fifth Avenue, basically from Coon Rapids, or East River Road, Coon, East River Road there to university, like as you're going towards Springbrook Nature Center, eighty-fifth is gonna be closed, they're putting it around about. So plan your, your route to avoid that road for the next little bit, to the end of September.
Yeah, the actual construction is from yesterday, July eighth through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So.
So, yeah, all right.
And I suppose we could also remember that there's the petting zoo and the touch-a-truck at Riverdale Village on the thirteenth. We did talk about that a few times already, so.
All right, we're ready to move, we're ready to move backwards now?
Backwards.
Backwards? Last week, we had the July fourth Fireman's Carnival, and it was a tremendous success. We had some rain on the fourth, but otherwise it was a just beautiful three days. We had the parade Tuesday night, lots of bingo, and we had the all-class, we're not so exclusive. We have the all Coon Rapids class high school reunion on Tuesday night, that went really well, that was fun.
I was there.
And you were there. And I just want to thank the, the firefighters, it's, it's the community, what's the name of their, their, their social group that they run this under? I don't know, but it's all Coon Rapids firefighters.
I think it's the Relief Association?
Yeah, they're, they're volunteering time. We need to thank the Coon Rapids North Star Lions Club, the Coon Rapids Police Department, who are there all the time, and the Coon Rapids City Public Works and the city staff and everybody that's, that's helping set up.
Community Strengths.
Community Strength Foundation, all of the organizations that stepped up and worked the bingo tent. It was, it was tremendous, and especially to Jake, our pyrotec, who put on the most tremendous fireworks display I think I've seen. It was phenomenal, and it was, and we were one of the communities that didn't give up. We, we didn't make, we did the Denny Green, don't make any decision before you have to make it. And we just, we met at two, and then we met at five, and then we met at eight, and it was like, we're gonna do this. We're not gonna move it up, we're not gonna cancel it, yeah.
But you didn't take a knee.
We didn't take a knee, no. No. But yeah, it, there are so many people that worked so hard to put that together, and they're, most of the, like the Lions Club, all those folks take four days off of work, you know, and, and some of them are there for more than that with the setup. And just thank you for all of that, because it wouldn't happen without you. Okay, that's all I had on that, anybody else? All right, anything else, any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.